This is Advisory Committee, Central Pole, Michigan, for the our regular meeting Monday, April the 11th. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome all. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Ghidula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
And Chair Barker.
Here.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
I can second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have approval for the minutes of the previous meeting, February 14th, 2022, a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Ghidula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Is there any public comment or communications concerning items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on then. Old business. This is a proposed adult-use marijuana zoning amendment. It is a public hearing, and I would like to open that public hearing at this point. And if Nathan from Williams and Works will give us the summary of where we're at.
Yeah, thank you. So this amendment would amend Section 17.03 FFP. It said these zoning ordinance related to adult-use marijuana establishments. If adopted, the proposed amendment would prohibit the establishment of any adult-use marijuana establishment on property located east of Flat River. This is the exact same amendment that was proposed last year, which was not acted upon by the city council. Other than that, I think you're all probably fairly familiar with it.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Any discussion from the council first before I ask the public comments at all at this point? Is there any comments from the general public? And if so, please come on up to the podium here to give us your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Ted Foote. I do have some interest in one of the properties that would be excluded from the zoning. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan, well, actually, Moline, Michigan, south side of Grand Rapids. I am currently pre-approved by the state and have put in an offer on one of the properties that would be excluded with the zoning change and just wanted to be here and see how this came to be. I do want to also mention that I'm not looking at making it a site for the public, so I'm not looking at sales, I'm looking at growth and processing. So it would be a nondescript building, I'd, you know, dress it up. There is also like the golf course there, I would consider potentially giving that back to the city, let me put a little park in there. All about bringing up the neighborhood, not looking at anything negative. And just wanted you to consider that not all properties actually hurt neighborhoods, they can help neighborhoods, and I hope that helps you consider your vote.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Ted, could you please repeat your last name for me?
Foote, F-O-O-T.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
Any other person that would like to talk before we start considering things? Okay. Having said that, then, is there any, oops?
Sorry about that, man.
No, that's fine.
Phone is lagging.
Thanks for your time, Joe Ruskala, 1308 Highland Hill over here, just up the road. I do commercial real estate and have been working with Ted now for over a year. And I think, just to kind of reiterate, the building that we were looking at was 805 East Main. It was the bowling alley. We brought some contractors through there to look at it for multiple uses. The good news is the building is actually built like a brick house. It's got steel beams and concrete, so it's really nice. But the bad news is for the bowling and everything that's in there, they had like over a million dollar renovation. So in part, what their use would be is really just sprucing up the building, making it look nice, keeping the, everything about the building would be upscale, but no one would be allowed in to shop or cruise. We did talk to Mike Burns, and we also mentioned that, you know, I did the burger from the deal here in town, and I work with the owner on the state with the movie theater and the big retail center there. And what we were trying to do is because they have so much retail activity, we would even say the building is 17,000 square feet, we don't need that much. So we could lease a portion of it to something that's amicable to the community. You know, there's a lot of restaurants that are still trying to get into the neighborhood or something that could just help benefit the community. You know, it's not a facility where we're going to have people shop. It's going to be just, you know, quiet, professional, clean building, no signage. And the building, just because it's in the condition it's in, you know, with this five, 10-year plan, I didn't think we'd make five-year plan with the projections, we would actually sell the facility, so we'd have an updated building. And then we'd probably build somewhere off-site in another community just for, it would be not full-fledged growing. So this is really more of a foothold to get to the next level. But in the meantime, the building would be in immaculate condition, care for it. And I have a picture for it, just in case you don't know which building it is. So it's the nice blue building on the corner there. I know you guys are working on that, and we'd be open to anything, just to work with it, because there's just not a lot. And we don't want to be necessarily on the main drag. It just, that was the one building that made the most sense, that could be amicable to fit in its current state. We could just move in and then we could just put the money towards the facade to make it look nicer for the community. So if you had any questions on it, or we're open to it, we're totally open to suggestions. Like if you say, hey, we want to, you know, put brick facade or put some landscaping, we're, no problem. We want to make it a win-win and fair for everybody, because it is a beautiful community. And we don't want the building to go into disarray or, you know, go down to what it's currently at. So with that being said, we do have an offer with the owner. But we haven't accepted terms yet because of this meeting tonight. So if that helps in any way, that's kind of just an open book on where we're at. And we're open to any feedback, or if you guys say, hey, we'll let you run with it, we can work with you as closely as we want with us on it to make it a really nice building and benefit the community in any way. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other person that wants to speak tonight concerning this issue? Excuse me. Then I'll close the public portion of this. We may have questions on you, and if we do, then we'll call you out.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, this is a proposal that we obviously passed on to the city council last fall, I believe it was, and the city council did not take it up. But it's been brought back up to our attention. And obviously, we have gone through this in other lengthy detail. My take on it is that it is still surrounded by residential properties. And since we have strived mightily to keep all operations away from residents, this does not, the location just doesn't work. It's too close to the residential areas, no matter what kind of facility it would be. So that's my take on it. I encourage commissioners to give their takes, and then we can go from there. We also asked Andy to verify that we were getting or looking at all the property that would be in there. Andy's not here, do you know, he, Andy's pretty thorough, so I'm assuming Andy...
What was the question?
So we asked Andy to make sure that we're getting all of the property, to look at all of the property that this would affect. So Andy's pretty thorough. He's on vacation, so I don't know if you can answer that or not, but...
Sorry, I assume you mean how it would impact properties. It's all properties to the east of the Flat River. So everything to the east would be encompassed by this amendment.
I believe there's four, four or five C3 properties in the Flat River. There's not many, and they're sporadically spread.
Yep.
So, I mean, they're not, they're not, the one thing about, if you look at the layout of the city from a zoning standpoint, the commercial and industrial properties primarily are downtown west. I'll be honest with you, I've worked in four communities now. This is by far the most aggy-zoned community I've been in, because you have industrial, sporadic through residential. Usually wherever I've worked, you have the commercial areas, you have the industrial areas, and you have other commercial areas, but you don't see commercial properties entrenched near residential properties or industrial properties entrenched near residential properties. It's, I'll be, I've never seen that before. But it is, you know, it is the nature of what we have in this community, so.
Like, do you know offhand, also, a related question? Do you know how many properties in the current area where the facilities are located? How many open properties and/or buildings are there that are still...
Open for sale?
Yeah.
Not many.
There's several lots I know that are for sale, I've seen those.
Building-wise, I'm not aware of any. I know of a couple lots more along, so on Bo's Road. Those are, to my knowledge, where the lots for sale are available. I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
And do you also know how many marijuana facilities we have already approved?
Yes, we've approved...
And in operation also?
Yeah, we've approved 11 special land uses. We've approved, correct me if I'm wrong, we've approved eight microprocessors and dispensaries and three grow facilities.
And there's six...
And we have five in operation right now.
Five?
Correct.
And I saw quite a bit of activity at one of the other ones that is on West Main. I don't know if they opened, but there was a lot of cars...
Grow facility, or?
No, across the street, right next to the grow facility there.
Joyology?
Yeah, Joyology.
Yeah, there's been some construction there.
Well, there was cars there.
You're right, they did get, they did just get approved, so maybe they are open now.
Yeah, that's what it looked like, was that they were, you know, either training people or people were coming in.
That's right, they just, we just got an approval letter from the state.
And I just, for common knowledge here, we have not, at least to my knowledge, we have not turned anybody down in that area. Is that, is that correct?
No, no, we've delayed applications, but we have not...
Correct.
We have not, we have not, we have not, we have not, for a special land use, they have not been revoked.
Right, right. And we have had no facility that we have okay go out of business or anything be forced out of business, or...
No, that's my knowledge, sure.
Correct?
No, that's my knowledge. So we've only had one issue with one facility pertaining to over.
Right.
We're working with them.
Which, that was a contested issue and was delayed for a while anyway. So we knew going in that was going to be a possibility.
Right. Another question that did come about at the city council was, was the council, what the council from, correct if I'm wrong, Marty, but what the council wanted to see is, is if there were other things that the planning commission might want to make modifications to, to the zoning ordinance. One of the issues that I've heard about, I'm not saying one way or another, but maybe restricting microprocessors in strip malls or grow facilities in strip malls, we obviously, because of the issue we had. That was something I believe that came up at council. And then if there was anything else anyone thought was an issue, at this time, I don't see any other issues from where I sit. The issue obviously is we cannot cap these. If we cap, we're going to open ourselves up to litigation. You could buffer, but I think that would be a logistical nightmare. But, and honestly, I don't think you're going to see a lot more requests coming to the city. I think you're gonna, I think you're probably going to see, once the market gets to a certain point, you're going to start seeing businesses not make it.
Yeah, my point is, is that we have been very open and businesses have opened up and operated. And there's still places available in the area that we would prefer them. The city council, planning commission, and a number of other people have asked for this kind of ordinance for a long time, to be honest. And the situation with the rollaway is still the same as it was when we seven to nothing denied it because of the residents right around it. So I am, I am totally in favor of recommending the proposed adult-use marijuana zoning amendment be sent to the city council for adoption.
I have a couple questions.
Yeah.
The first is, I don't remember, what's the current buffer between residential and a commercial establishment is? So I guess that's one question, that with rollaway and the other handful of commercial businesses on the east side of town, would that buffer, you know, making that larger help, or would...
Well, it's varied with each individual property. Each individual property presents its own situation. On, what was it, West Street, we had the parking lot there, and we made that sort of the buffer, and they would put up a fence in the back and things of that nature.
The old car dealership.
Yes.
They had to terminate the sports programs that were going on back there, because we couldn't come up with a way to separate that off, so.
And you put fences between the trailer park there and also across the street between the apartments. And that particular facility, you had a fence going in the grow place with the church. So there's, there's a number of things that we have done, but they've all been, as far as I recall, each one has been individually...
Right, there's no distance pertaining to...
That was my question, more of a like...
And the residential for the rest, there's no distance from residential. It's residentially zoned areas where it's not approved. And the issue obviously you have east of the river is...
It's all residential.
If you have residential, even on the main road, it's literally surrounding it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've heard the argument, well, you know, you have, you have these facilities buff budding up to residential neighborhoods. You do, but they're, the properties were zoned commercial to begin with.
Correct.
And, as you say, they were, we've been requiring buffers to buffer those as much as possible. But there's no, the only distance we have is 1,000 feet from schools, nursery schools, and 500 feet from the C2 district. So those are the only footage or distance requirements that we have.
Right. My second, I guess it's more of a comment, but I actually was not present at the meeting where we didn't approve the last time the rollaway application came up. I did watch it and I read through the minutes and everything. But part of the issue was trying to come up with that buffer, if I remember correctly, because of the street and the residence, so you couldn't put like a six-foot fence. I mean, you'd kind of look like a little fort or something.
The building is right next to the houses.
Yeah, so then, I guess my question going forward is, there's another interest for the building for marijuana use. That potentially is going to be the same problem each time a facility wants to come in here, correct? I would assume, I mean, because nothing's changing as far as...
The only difference is, is that the location, again, it's surrounded entirely by residential. That's the only difference. It's endemic to that particular location. And throughout the east side, from the river, the east side is, as Mike said, it's residential. Whereas the west side is not, and we can put in some buffers on that side. And there are still buildings available. I'm sure there's buildings out there that are for sale. You know, they've got a different business right now, but they're for sale. So, you know, my take is, is that all we're doing is we're simply saying the east side of the river to the city limits are, is predominantly residential. And therefore, it's almost impossible to do any sort of buffering in any meaningful way. And it doesn't matter what you put in there, it's, you know, it's there. Houses are, you know, across the street, I mean, they're right there. So, you know, the building is still able to be used as a bar or restaurant or bowling alley, or lots of other things. It's just that our residents have periodically stated very forcefully that they would prefer that, you know, marijuana stay away from the residents. So that's, that's all this does.
They'd rather have the bar there.
Well, they did say that it...
Yeah, that's twice the amount of people and noise.
Yeah.
So, so if we push this back to the city council again, is the hope just that they'll act on it, having seen it a second time? Or is it going to be, it's not changing anything with...
Right. Yeah, that's, that's their prerogative. They will hold, I assume they would hold a public hearing probably in May. And then I would assume they scheduled the vote in June, that would be the assumption.
And if they don't, then...
Comes back to us again.
Comes back to us again, or... They do it like, so these guys are waiting to find out.
Right.
I think there's something, you know, I know, in my conversations with councils, we're trying to avoid, what I didn't want to do is bring it back to them where they're going to just not move forward on it or going to be ping-ponging back and forth all the time. When this first was, when this first was presented to them last year, there was, at the time, before this all went to the planning commission, there was, there was support to review this issue. And then when it went to council, that changed. I don't, I don't have, I don't have an explanation for that. I know there's a little resistance from some council members about making any modifications to this, just in my conversations with them. But I, I do think that they did, they did ask you to look at this again with, I believe, the intention to act. I would hope that would be the case, because it's, if we brought it back to reconsider, I, I think it would be, from where I sit, I don't know how that would look between the planning commission and the city council, where they ask you to look at something and then they don't act on it.
Yeah. I think the first time when we did it, this board presented it as taking it out. But in the meantime, a buyer had decided to pay the work to do that. My personal feeling then was, well, you know, he kind of beat it to the punch. As it turned out, you know, the site plan review went wrong. But after that, when it went back on the market, I think consensus with the council then was, well, now we have a fresh look, because it didn't go forward, you know. And I think it's a little bit more pal of the board.
I, you know, we voted seven to nothing the last time around, sixty to nothing. You know, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't see where it's, the issue hasn't changed. It's still on that east side of the river, it's primarily residential. On the west side, there are plenty of opportunities. We have not in any way impeded anybody from establishing business in the marijuana field. We've done everything that we were supposed to do. And as far as the last time it got voted down, the bowling alley, I voted down sixty to nothing. That's the way the planning commission and the ordinance allowed us to do that. I mean, it wasn't a negative thing, it was just, that's what the law was. And then, Lord knows, we are forced to do law. We know a lot of times we're not real happy with it necessarily, but we have to. And in this case, we're simply saying, hey, look, this is what the people want. So, you know, the city commission can either take it up, or they can just not take it up or return it back to us. I mean, they do anything they want, that's all.
Now, if they return it back, then they come back and we can just approve it then?
Exactly. Or, or not, yeah, yeah. I mean, this could go back and forth.
If they don't mind, we should just approve it.
Yeah, I mean, or it can go back and forth four or five times.
Well, they are. The first time around, it never came to a blow.
Yeah.
So it never...
Yeah, they never, they never made a motion to put it on, they never made a motion to put it on board.
But I guess the important thing is that there's other context now that will come to them with this, right? There's not, it's not just the same amendment, it's the same amendment having had a six to zero vote, that holding, you know, uploading some of the ideas of it, with their, you know, past history and so on. So there's more context now. So I guess things will be different if we sign it to them one more time.
Mike, would they be, they would have to hold a public hearing?
I don't believe they need to. I believe the planning commission had to have a public hearing pertaining to this.
Yeah.
I would bring it to them at their next council meeting, probably Monday, and they can decide what they want to do at that time. I probably want to, I'll probably confer with the city attorney first before I do that, but...
Right.
I believe we can take this to them Monday. If there, if there is, if there is a recommendation from the planning commission. And they may not take, I mean, they may not even take action, they may table it for another meeting. That's very well, they're describing.
Their prerogative, sure.
Yeah.
I would like to make the proposal then that the proposed adult-use marijuana zoning amendment be forwarded on to the city council for consideration. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And is there further discussion? And Mike, I'll open that up to you too, as the city manager. Any thoughts at that point, you know, what we've already discussed?
No, I don't think so. I think, you know, it's really, it's really a matter of where you want these facilities to operate. The other, the other question I, you know, the question that'll be asked to me is, was why would we restrict it here and not restrict it over there? And it boils down to me on land use. The majority of your commercial entities operate in those areas.
Yes.
If you want to allow this, like, you know, that's the problem with the city council, but if there's any concern, you know, about maybe any type of zoning issues, the fact of the matter is, is that our business district is where these, the majority of these are now, or where these all are now. And there's other businesses operating in there as well, between that and the industrial businesses. And from a zoning standpoint, it seems to work, so.
And we never had an issue until the Methodist Church, Archbishop Manzen...
Right, correct, correct.
This was never, this was never even thought of.
Yeah, and there was no intent to have any on this side of the...
Well, the church covered it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
There were a couple, I mean, even when we did, there were a couple properties we knew of east of the river where it could happen, but no one ever really thought it would. And everyone at the time thought the Methodist Church was the one that, that would be the one that, because of that, could, no one ever thought the nursery school would go away, which is why they voted the way they did, the ordinance.
You look at the properties too, there's, it's probably less than 3% is even available. You got the bottom, or the Riverside motorcycle place down there, and then Rollaway.
Yeah, Progressive.
That's it.
Yeah, Progressive.
Natural gas.
There's Progressive, there's Kaiser's, there's the Rollaway, and then there's the natural gas place off Jackson.
Three properties that are zoned commercial that would enable right now.
And I think Riverside, I could be wrong, I think Riverside's in the council.
Yeah, Riverside is, yeah, definitely is. So it's Progressive.
I was looking at the, yeah, I was trying to look at the plot map.
Well, we've closed public comment, but Joe, climb up.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
I'll reopen public comment for one comment.
You are, thank you so much. Is there just more of a question, just to be proactive? Thank you again. Is my turn right? Yeah, I have to, he was going to hop on the phone and... He was up on the phone and, so, from a commercial real estate broker, part of the reason why we like this building so much is it's zone C3 from the map. And everything around it, as Mike pointed out, is residential, well, one, two, or three, which kind of makes it weird. We haven't seen any opportunities on BURMs, that they're all off-market, which I have no problem cold-calling and picking up. The problem is, is they only sell, and if they do sell, it then skews the price wildly because now they're like, oh, well, you know, you're a grow facility. What made this site very reasonable, and this is just, not even specifically for us, but just for what he mentioned, because it's such an densely commercial-packed area, unless you guys actually change the zoning to residential, it's always going to be a commercial-use building. And we're not a bar or a restaurant where it's going to be a lot of people. And as far as the buffer goes, we meet a thousand foot from the property near the nearest school. We're in the downtown district, but not near C2 zoning, you know, we're five, we're less than 500 feet away. So we meet everything on that particular site, that's why we liked it. If there are other properties available, we are totally fine with, with this one. And we just, when we were cold-calling, nobody wanted to sell. And it's like, the state, when they qualify you, you have up to a year to say, okay, you got your documents, now go find a building, otherwise you got to go back for a re-licensing here. So I guess the question in here is, if I was the planning commission, and we said, okay, we want a master plan that's residential, well, it hurts the value of that building owner because now it's not a commercial building, it's residential, and it changes the price of what we were paying for. So my question to you gentlemen ladies is that if we said, hey, we can, we'll work with you on this one site because it does in fact meet all of the needs, would you at least be open to letting us put a proposal in, letting us put an application in, and just running the due diligence with you guys and work with you openly to say, what, what would you like to see to make it more comfortable for you? Because it is on a commercial drag, and it is a commercial building. And if something did come up in the meantime, we'll cancel the offer and we'll happily go look at it. I, we have no problem doing that, it's just when we were cold-calling, there was nothing. Then, the people were like, it's either a vacant land that's being farmed, or someone has their storage for their toys. And it's like, okay, well, I can't kick them out. And I know the, somewhat the story of the current owner, but my guy's licensed through the state, and he's in a crazier by trade, so it's like, we're a professional, you know, it's not like we're a Chichi Chan group coming in here. It's, we want to work with you and come to a hopefully mutual decision. It's just, if you have a commercial building that fits the mold now, and there's nothing else that does, how do we help our end or my client find something that's in the middle with the year timeframe we have with the state? Because they will make us reapply, and that's a very expensive endeavor. So I don't disagree with anything that Bruce said, I, I, you know, on Highland Hills, residential, I agree with him. But because the zoning map's made, I mean, yeah, it's right there, it's the only orange property around the tan and the brown, so it's like, well, how do you help that building owner out? Does that make sense?
It, it, it does.
And I'm not bashing anyone here, I just want to help with our timeframes, that's all.
And what I, what I will say is that, obviously, anything that was in there before would be grandfathered in. The situation though is that it's the use as much as anything, and the time to make that decision is, I think, now. And, you know, in your situation, you know, the city council will consider it, and they will hold, you know, some kind of hearing that, you know, may be able to help you. And I don't know, beyond that, you know, I would think that the city offices can help out with looking for buildings and those kinds of things, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying that I've seen buildings out there, and I've seen property out there that's for sale. So, that's the best I can tell you.
Would you recommend us putting an application in there regardless, or at least?
I would not, I would not, it's not my, it's your call, but I, you know, let it go to the city council and see what they say.
Actually, not so much, we're just taking it one use away from the property basis.
Correct.
It's still commercial property.
Still a C3.
Yeah.
It's just whether you want to allow that area, that area of the city to have marijuana facilities, which do fall under special land use.
Correct, correct.
So if the city council votes and say, yes, we're going to amend it, then that's fine. And if they say no, then we can be open to supply an application. And while we're doing that, if I did find something on, you said Bowers?
Yes.
I found something that was amicable there, everyone seems like they'd be more in favor of, or at least really easy to work with on that. You guys have been great with everybody, I know you've.
We haven't turned anybody down.
Yeah, it is.
It's strictly that this particular facility, and the one, the, the, we go across right there to the two facility, I call it one, frankly. But that facility is in the middle, surrounded by residential properties. And one of the things that we have done diligently, ever since we even started considering laws, was to make sure that the marijuana operations were separated from residential areas. Rather by burms or walls, or in whatever way we can do it, we have been very diligent about that, on every piece of property we look at. And therefore, this does not make any sense to have a facility in the middle of a residential area. It just doesn't. And while we're at it, we're going to say the same thing for all of the east side of the river. And that, that precludes anything on that side of the river. And it does not preclude the area on the west side where there are 11 facilities, Mike, I think that you said?
Yeah.
Already, and five or, five or six are already. So, you know, that's, that's the best I can tell you.
Well, that's fair, I'm all of it. I appreciate that, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, the motion has been approved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
We'll close the hearing.
I'll re-close that public hearing, absolutely, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Sue, voice vote then, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Padula?
Yes.
Commissioner Flank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you all. New business, public hearing. I'll open a public hearing for Grand Rapids Gravel Special Land Use Re-application. Nathan, you want to walk us through it?
Yeah, absolutely. As you know, this application was reviewed and approved by the planning commission in December of 2020. However, no construction or other onsite activities had taken place on the property to exercise that permit. No extension for the special land use was sought by the applicant, and therefore, the 2020 permit is considered null and void, and the applicant must now reapply to proceed with the project. Primarily, the project is the same, with the exception of a couple of items. The applicant is going to maintain those two or three properties with the duplex and the single-family homes. It's something that they're going to buy around them until there comes a time where they want to excavate those properties. And at that time, they'll use their discretion with, however they're leasing them, to move those residents out of there. Andy has provided an additional recommended condition, the condition list or findings are the same. The addresses submitting an updated site plan is showing, you know, temporary burning around those properties, protect them while there are residents living there. Two, there is a possible limitation with the trail location, that easement is of course included as a condition, and through conversations with Grand Rapids Gravel, it's fairly wet, and I know we do have, we do have Dave Austin here, who's been working on that trail. So there's a few of us that can answer questions regarding that. Andy has provided two options for potential conditions there. One of them is a little bit more strict than the other one, and I can answer any questions regarding those as well. Other than that, though, like I said, the application is the same, it's really just a reapplication because the special use permit expired.
Thank you, Nathan. Questions, commissioners, before we open up? And I want to specifically call on Mr. Austin, I think first, and then on Mr. Deikma to give us the updates as far as that goes. Mr. Austin, you like to come on up and tell us what the issue is, or issues, or vote calls, or all that good stuff?
Sure. Do you all see a version of this map? This is the overall trail project, we've been hearing about it for the last 10 years. We have approval from the funding agencies to proceed with Phase 1, which would connect a trail at the township park through the proposed Grand Rapids Gravel property, below the water treatment plant, and then up through Stony Lakeside Park, and then down through an easement on private property, which we call the Reagan property, and then to the fairgrounds underneath the existing overpass, and then back up to Bo's Road. This, this last extension is required by MDOT so that this is not a dead end on Phase 1. Phase 2, which we're working on, we have, we've raised the money for all of this, by the way, through grants and through local community funds, et cetera. But Phase 2 would put a new bridge over the Grand River and continue east to the existing trail that's on Mount Calm Avenue. This is being held up by acquisition of property by the DNR from the railroad, particularly from South Jackson to Mount Calm Avenue. They've been working on this for several years, and they're nearing completion, but they weren't able to finalize it in time for us to do all this as one project. So we requested a while back, could we split it and do this in phases so we wouldn't pull this up? So that was approved, and we're proceeding with design. And I believe it was Jerry Hale with the township approached Grand Rapids Gravel and said, hey, would you be willing to give us an easement through your property for the trail system? And they, they said they would, and that's kind of where it was at the time. And of course, they put together their mining plan and submitted that to you. And now we're out there designing it. And this graphic. I'm just going to hold this up because.
Oh, pardon.
Now your closet is failing. Okay, so this graphic shows the mining operation, and over here is the township. And the green line represents the trail. The, this darker blue is where their lake will end up being. As James can tell you, they're going to be mining that, that'll end up being the lake. And then this lighter blue or green here is the regulated wetlands. So you can see where they've allowed us, where this 20-foot easement is that they're proposing, is just on the edge of the regulated wetlands, on the edge of their mining operation. So it's a pretty tight corridor to work through, and we are not in a global flood situation yet. We're probably not going to see it this year, but if you remember 13 and 18, et cetera, this area gets wet. So it's going to be a difficult area to build in, but if the conditions are, you know, if we can figure out the conditions, it might work. In conversations with Eagle, who permits this, they're going to throw a lot of hurdles in front of us. We cannot fill within the regulated wetlands, and we cannot, we're restricted in where we can work in what is called the floodway. And maybe you'll remember from other conversations in our floodplain. Our floodplain in Wolf goes all the way up into Bo's Road, right? But the floodway is a narrower strip, and what the floodway is, is where the river actually moves during a flood event. And in that floodway, we're restricted in what we can put in the floodway because it may restrict the river hydraulically. So whenever we do a bridge, et cetera, and the township had to go through all of this in putting their bridge in. So I cannot get Eagle to give me a verbal, this is going to work or not, of course. So we're going to have to go through the permitting process, and it's not just filling out a form and asking permission. We're going to have to do a hydraulic analysis where we model what the fill in this area will look like and get their permission to do this. And that's going to take a bit of time to do that and a bit of money. That's what it takes. When I first started walking through there and saw this, I contacted James and his partners over there and expressed a little concern that I had, and asked, is there any room that you have just, just north of here? Because when I was walking it before I got this map, and not knowing where all the boundaries were, I figured that I, I could fit this in some high and dry, but I'd have to be quite a bit further north than what they have here. And as they explained to me, they're in the business of mining and selling those products. And so the answer was politely, no. If you moved your trail north, then that would be an area that we could not mine, and we would, we would lose revenue. They did explain that, you know, there, in other operations that they have, once they start mining, you know, right now they're working on sporadic soil bornings. Once they start mining, once they run out of product in an area, they would abandon it. So it could be that at some point, there might be more room there, but they can't commit to that today without compromising their potential revenue. So where we're at is, we're going to proceed, I think, with trying to permit this. But what I, as I was explaining to Andy Moore, the planner, since, since this door was now open, was that it could be that we're going to get a big no from Eagle on this. And if we do, then I'm kind of stumbling as to where we go with the trail. And back, back to this bigger map. So the option that we would have would be to, to go north of their property, along Bo's Road, for example, parallel Bo's Road. Or, as was suggested by some, you know, why don't you just cross the street where you put that sidewalk a few years ago? And, you know, and just, and do that. Well, those are options, obviously, both have their plus and minus. This is the preferred route for a lot of reasons. One is it connects directly to the township park. Two, it's going to be the coolest-looking trail, it's going to have a lake on both sides, a water on both sides. And it's away from traffic and other uses that Grand Rapids Gravel has planned. But, so we just don't know. And so I think what Andy had tried to do was to drop some language in the conditions that he's presented there, that maybe is just, maybe formalizing what, what Grand Rapids Gravel and I have kind of informally said in personal conversations, that if you can't get permitted here, I'd ask you, you'd be willing to work with us to, you know, to another route? And I think the second version of that text there is what was proposed. I think Andy, in looking at it, thought that maybe that should be a little firmer. In other words, the proposed language was, if we can work it out, great. If not, the potential is that we would, we would, we may be landlocked with that trail. And we may have to then go to an area that we, are not as nice. So for instance, if I go on the north side of Bo's Road, the last place I want to be with is trail. I've got the power poles to deal with, I've got a couple of physical buildings that are there that would, if the trail went by, I wouldn't be able to park a car or even drive one anymore because their garage is right up against there. On a project this big, it's not beyond us saying, okay, well, we'll move your garage way. They're not insurmountable, they're just, they're just undesirable obstacles. So, but we want to be respectful of the business owners and investors in this community, including Grand Rapids Gravel. And I'll let James speak to that. But they've got a development, a residential development to propose, not in writing, I mean, this is just a placeholder someday for this area. So if this was a plan, I could just ask, could I put the trail here right in front of their houses? Right in front of their houses.